So seven o'clock, so let's call this regular meeting of the Garfield Township Planning Commission to order. First order of business is to recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ian, are you going to do a roll call?
Mr. Augustineelli.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Robertson.
Here.
Flyne.
Here.
You good?
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
Racine?
Here.
Next item of business is the first of our two public comments. If there's anybody from the public that wants to comment, you're welcome to come forward and do that now, or do it later. Don't see any interest in our large public throng wanting to come forward now, so we'll close this first public comment. Moving along, the next item on the agenda is a review and approval of the agenda. If anyone's got a conflict of interest, we should hear about that now, and if not, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Next item to do on our agenda is to review the minutes from the January 25th meeting. Does anybody have any suggested modifications to those?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes for the January 25th meeting.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next item is correspondence, John or Steve, any correspondence to be made aware of?
There are four items on your desk. Well, actually, one is a notice from East Bay Township indicating that their plan is fully adopted and is now placed and made available on the township's website. You have three other items which will be under, there's a site plan there for a hotel that I'll mention, talk about that on our staff report. And then there's a timeline, and then a table with a blue banner that we'll cover under item...
Seven A, I think?
Yeah, seven A. Seven A.
Okay, thanks. Moving along then, onto reports. Molly, any township board report this evening?
Nothing.
Moving on to planning commissioners, other planning commissioners. Bob, anything for the ZBA?
No meeting.
Okay. Chris, anything for Parks and Rec that we haven't heard about?
We're gearing up for a grant application. Staff's working on it for a trust fund grant application to fund improvements to the Commons area.
Awesome. Joe, you want to fill them in on our exciting joint planning commission meeting?
Yeah, we actually had a joint planning commission, had actually a lot of good discussion. We got an update on the infrastructure study, which was good. I mean, we only meet quarterly, so there's always a lot of information to catch up on. And then we also were presented the natural, the commons, nature area design update, which is, I think, the same one the town board saw with Rock Solid and some bike plans, the trail updates. A lot of information there, a lot of work to do there, but really nice handout for everybody in the booklet on that. And then John also talked about some possible funding resources for those projects, possible resources for the improvements. And then a building permit on one of the cottages, I think that was so it could be sold, isn't it?
Right. It's the old caretaker's cottage, I think Cottage 84, which is near, kind of going towards the Greenspire School, and it's kind of a standalone facility, building that's going to be redone for a single family, as a single-family residence.
Yeah, so a lot of good information. And if you haven't seen the infrastructure, the design plan for the trails, it's pretty extensive, but it's pretty fascinating to look at. Sounds like there's a lot of desire on that group to participate, you know? But our two directions may be a little different, is what we see for the future of that, but good to have them involved, so.
Thanks, Joe. Staff report is next. John or Steve going to give us something on that?
So I got one item, and then Steve's got some other items. On your desk is a site plan. This is not an approved site plan or anything. This is just for your information. I wanted to show you an illustration of the discussion and the plans going under review rate at this moment for the extended stay hotel that would be located to the rear of the Chick-fil-A. I just thought this would help, kind of give you a sense of how the build-out of that site is ultimately anticipated. Also, one thing that you don't see on here is that drive that goes along the south side of that site will be under an easement, across access easement, and then the far east side going north and south, there will be another easement there. So while it's not shown to connect to the north or to the south, there will be the easement that will be in place should a private road or private drive go in there, there is the area that can go in to allow for, I don't think it would be the full width of that, it would require some on the adjacent property, but for the most part, I think we could get, well, actually, it's, no, it's less, it's, I think it's around 40 or feet or so in terms of width there. So they would still need some additional land provided on the other side, but it does give us some ability to work towards getting that connection between Lowe's and the Grand Traverse Mall, which is what we're ultimately seeking.
If this were to come to fruition, let's just take care of the temporary parking problem that you've had with, or we've had with the Chick-fil-A.
Correct. There already is in place. This is, there's a site condominium on this site, and as part of that master deed agreement between both sites, there is that shared parking.
Cool. Thanks. Thank you, John. Looks like also in our packet you had the monthly planning department report that you gave to the town board.
Yep. Steve, you want to mention anything?
Yep, that will be in the town board packet for their meeting next week on the 14th. We also started including new applications, just to indicate things we've received, but that we're still reviewing for completeness, but something that has at least come in by the deadline. There's two in there. Actually, since we wrote that, there's two more. So we have four new things in this time around, which would, if they're all complete, be introduced in March. And if they all were to continue on, one of them is a special use permit, one's an amendment to a special use permit, one's a PUD amendment, and one's a proposed rezoning. So if they all are complete and all go according to schedule, by the time April's meeting comes, we could have four public hearings at the same meeting. They're all actually relatively straightforward, at least at first glance, so we'll see if any hiccups come up, but after January not getting anything new for this meeting, we're going to have a little run of them here, so be on the lookout for that. And then, there's a couple things related to the master plan. We did meet with Sean Winter, the City of Travis City planner. So they're also going through their master plan, so I'm saying, at some point, we will also get a chance to look at their master plan, and they're also doing a mobility plan. So there will be a chance for public comment on that. And then as we go through our master plan to see where, is there some, like especially corridors, we're going to be looking at corridors and neighborhoods, as we've mentioned in the master plan, where those corridors lead into the city, like Veterans or Front Street, what is kind of like the lane use on their side and our side, and does it make sense, does it make sense to, how it's laid out, and just to have some of those conversations. And they'll have the opportunity to comment on ours, as will East Bay. We'll have an opportunity to comment on ours as well. We also had the fourth in a series of four webinars today for Michigan Association of Planning, was doing housing in four parts. Today's was all about accessory dwelling units, which we've talked about a couple times, but it actually walked through a couple examples of those, communities that are doing those. As we get into more of the master plan, we'll probably do an entire study session on housing itself. But they, it was good to see different examples. They walked through the zoning reform toolkit, which I think people saw in one of the previous MAP communications, and that's something that we have a copy of as well. So plenty to come when the master plan rolls around, but there's a lot going on out there.
Good. Thank you, Steve. Any other staff report?
That's all we got.
Okay. Then moving along, under unfinished business, item 6A is Planning Department Report 2023-20, another update on the proposed PUD minor amendment for Chelsea Park West. You going to lead us off on this one, John?
Sure. So you have the report in your packet there. Since the last meeting, myself and Mike Green, the zoning administrator, met up with Chris Wickline from JV Donaldson and Bill Crane from Crane Engineering, and we were able to walk the site and kind of go through some of the site plan issues and concerns, and they gave us an update where they're at on things. So in terms of some of the outstanding items, they were able to resolve those. We did receive a new set of plans at the end of January there. In terms of really most of the requirements that we were concerned about, everything has pretty much been addressed. There is just some small, very minor items that we've listed that would probably just be identified as conditions. I think one of the things that, when you go out onto that site, where there is still some construction being, occurring on the site, for the most part, a lot of it has been done, at least on the outsides of the building. So it's getting to that point where we're kind of almost really past some of these site plan things and getting really almost to close out, almost like kind of going through a punch list of items that are going to be needed to be addressed. So that's why I had Mike Green, the zoning administrator, he's the one that issues the land use permit and then finalizes the project, closes it out, making sure that it met all the improvement, or the approvals that were part of the original plan. So I thought it was a good meeting, and we, like I said, had the items addressed in the site plan sets. A few things do have, are just, like you mentioned, the, some of the striping is something that's obviously weather-dependent, and then just some of the things that, they are making some changes out there. For instance, like the car charging stations, they are moving those more towards the front of the sidewalks. They were kind of to the back. They are moving those to the front, which will alleviate any type of issues if you have like any cables or anything like that extended over the sidewalk. That would not occur with the new location of those car charging stations. We've also talked about the trees and the planting along there, along Hartman Road, which will have yet to occur. There was some changes that were, had to be made, for instance, like the pathway due to some of the contours of the land and so forth, and they have addressed those and recognized those in the plan. So, if you have any comments or questions, or...
I don't think I had much, the only thoughts I had were on a few of these in the conditions that talks about this shall be provided or that shall be completed. And I'm thinking it might make sense to put a timeline, find out from the applicant when they can do this stuff, but put something in there so that we don't wind up 20 years from now with no sidewalks that we thought we were going to get, and feel kind of embarrassed. And there were a couple of others that I spotted in the report that I didn't see carried over into the conditions, which I guess I'd like to ask you a little bit about. I'm not sure I made notes of all of them, but like the walking path adjustment there, in the middle of page two of the report. It's described, but I didn't see that carried over as a condition.
It's, so it is shown on the plan, though?
Oh, it is shown on the plan?
Yeah, so that's why I was...
Okay, that may explain it.
Didn't call that out, per se.
Okay.
Yep.
Would the same be true of the charging stations being relocated to the edge of the sidewalk?
Yes.
That's not called out because it's in the plans?
Except for the one that was probably just overlooked with the one next to Building Four, but the rest of them have all been relocated out towards the parking lots.
Okay.
Parking spaces.
Maybe we can, can ask Bill, looking at these conditions, the, there's a couple of the items on the site plan, I guess you wanted scales to be provided, that's the first item.
Yeah, just a few of the plan sheets.
What kind of timeframe would it take you to get those things to stand?
Tomorrow, I mean, tomorrow or Monday?
Say by end of February, or what do you want to say?
Sure.
And the parking piece, parking space striping, to get that to match up with the carport columns, I'm sure you can't be striping in the winter. When do you figure that'll get done?
Could you come to the, yeah, microphone? Thank you.
Chris Wickline, JV Donaldson, you know, we're intending to do that as soon as we can. We could do it temporarily with tape, which we did on some of the areas that were, that they were put in. And the installation of the carports, so we striped that, and the carports get installed after the striping, the carports.
I got it.
So it's a little bit of a, that's how we ran into those situations where the, my guys on site and the carport guys, the layout didn't jive. You know, I mean, we'll be doing that as soon as we can. I mean, if we've got weather, even in this, you know, next month, we'll take care of it if we can. But I think, you know, sometime in May would be, you know, we'll definitely have time in May to do that.
By end of May, would that be reasonable to put there?
Yep.
Maybe that can be, I guess I'm looking at the conditions for like number two, adjustments to the parking, striping shall be completed by end of May?
Mm-hmm.
How about the moving of the charging station located east of Building Four that's going to get moved to the edge of the sidewalk? When do you figure that is going to get done?
Well, I would just say that that could be done on the site plan, so that could be tied to actually number one.
Okay.
Because it would just, it just needs to be noted, because I think it's going to take some, some time to actually relocate those.
Yeah, I'm not trying to hurry anybody, just...
Yeah, I mean, we're ready to do that. It was kind of in process, and the meeting came up, so we're kind of just making sure that, you know, everything, you know, we've got all the direction we need from you guys, and we're ready to do that now.
How about the install of the emergency gate? Has that got a timeframe on it anywhere?
It's been approved, and I know you said it's on-site, it just hasn't been installed. We do not have anything on there in terms of a timeline.
Should that be in the conditions, or is that covered under six for agency review shall be received and...
Well, Metro Fire has pretty much already signed off on it. I don't know if they have necessarily a timeline that it has to be installed by. It might be appropriate for us to do that, only because it's, it's not, it's, that particular location is really functioning, it's more than just an extra entryway onto the site for Metro Fire. It's really also restricting traffic from going out onto Hartman, so it kind of creates more of a traffic regulatory item. So, you know, that would ideally happen sooner than later.
Should that be a separate condition, then, the gate?
If we specify a time, we should probably list it out there.
Okay. The emergency gate shall be installed by, when do you think that'll be doable?
We should be able to do it in March.
Okay, by end of March, then?
Yep.
Cool. And again, I'm not trying to rush you, just want to...
No, no, I agree. We want to get the stuff done too, so we're ready to put it in.
And then the stuff along Area One and Area Two, John, about, it's talked about on page three of the report, the unapproved parking and storage areas, and those things that are, remove the gravel area, plant trees, coordinate with the road commission, and then the second location, I guess I talked about the emergency gate, didn't I? When, when is the stuff that's talked about in that first bullet point supposed to be happening? Removal of the gravel, planting of trees?
So that will probably take some time into the spring to deal with that, in terms of, obviously, there's the kind of grading that has to go on there, but then also plant, you know, installing of the plant materials and any type of seating. So I would say that would, should be in at least, you know, let's say by the end of June or something like that.
I agree with that.
Reasonable, okay. I'm not sure there's a condition for that one, but there probably ought to be.
Well, there is a condition listed in my report as number five. So it basically is, well, it kind of talks about those trees.
We had that, okay.
And so we, it's basically just saying that they, the specs on those have to conform to the zoning ordinance in terms of size and so forth, but we could just add, and shall be installed by the end of June.
I think that covered what I was thinking, and it looks like you've got some findings of fact that looks like you're satisfied that they're all met. I don't see any that aren't. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the findings of fact?
I had a question. At the last meeting, we talked about the parking lot islands that were on the plan, but were not constructed in the field. And I noticed that a number of those parking islands are indicated as removed on the amended plans, but I didn't see any, anything addressing that in the staff notes or the review.
Yeah, I was aware of that, but I did not note that, other than calculating out the number of car spaces. But yeah, you're correct, there was, those were removed and are not in, you know, according to the original plan, but they are according to the revised plan, but...
So I don't have a problem if they're removed. I only have a problem if they're removed and, as a result, the parking lots no longer meet the landscaping ordinance. And I printed out a copy of it and brought it with me tonight, but it is pretty specific about that some of them look like they're narrower than they were. So I'm curious if we meet the minimum 10-foot width and, for vegetation. And I'm curious if the revised plan provides for the, each interior landscape area shall include one or more, no, that's not what it was, where was it? All parking areas with two or more parking aisles shall require interior landscape areas of at least 10 square feet for each parking space. So my only concern would be that, I understand that these were not installed per plan, and I guess we, you know, if they're not required by the ordinance, we could say, okay, they didn't have to do them, they were extra. But if they were, I think it sets a bad, I think it would set a bad example if we, as a planning commission, just shrug our shoulders and say, oh, well, it didn't get built, I suppose you don't have to do it now.
Seems like a valid point to me. Do you have any questions or comments on it?
So there will actually, so that, the two or more parking aisles is a, really, there are some areas that it relates to. There's basically three spots where it relates to, basically the part that's kind of down by Building One and Two, so that's where...
Two islands have been eliminated there.
Yeah, and that's, well, I'm just saying, that's where you have two lanes of, rows of circulation. Then there's the one that's between Building Three and Building Number Five. Am I reading that right? So that's a situation, you got the carport in the middle, and then, and then the other one is between Nine and 10, which is also where you have basically the two rows.
Right. So I guess my thought would be, if it needs to be checked, we can maybe include a condition that, you know, any, if those islands don't meet, or omission of those islands results in non-conformance with the landscape requirements, then those islands need to be installed per plan. Does that seem reasonable?
Chris, you got any thoughts or comments on that issue?
Yeah, I think in the, in the areas where, where we're talking about, where we have the two islands, those islands on the end of the parking lots are still there. The only condition, I think, where we don't have that is in Phase Two, in between Eight and Nine. However, the, the plan originally didn't have those islands there. And in the fire marshal, there was two concrete islands on either end of that, and then after that approval, the fire marshal made us reduce, or take out one of those concrete islands to, for a turning radius. So I think in between Eight and Nine, I think that, that, you know, we run into a problem there. But the, they originally weren't grass islands to begin with.
Yeah, if you didn't have them to begin with, I wouldn't have any complaint.
Yeah, and I think the other two areas where, where we do have that condition, we have the grass island, so I'm, you know, if you want to put that condition in there, subject to that Eight and Nine area where we don't have them, that's fine with me.
Did you change, did you rename Eight and Nine?
I have Nine and Ten.
Sorry.
Nine and Ten.
Yeah. Yeah, they, the way we had them, they had them...
One plan, Eight and Nine are anywhere near each other, and then the next one, Eight and Nine are right next to each other, so that's why I'm trying to make sense of that, so...
Sorry, yeah. Sorry, Nine and Ten.
Depends which plan you're looking at, so...
All right. Gotcha.
So they have different dates, at least?
Kind of, sort of. There's C1, and then there's C1C. They're pretty much the same, both dated, well, one was May and one was January, so they have different dates on them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, May and December, so, December is the one we're working on, so...
So whether it's in landscape islands or whatever, the, or parking islands or whatever, there's going to be compliance with the landscape ordinance, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can pretty much state that parking lot, parking lot landscaping islands will be provided per zoning ordinance requirements.
Cool.
Does that work, Chris?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments or questions, thoughts?
You mentioned the construction gate, and I guess the last, when do you expect your construction to be complete? Do you have a date in mind?
So we're basically done minus these, the punch list items, and we have the carports left to install. So, you know, all of our job trailers and everything have been removed, minus we're waiting for some to get picked up. Guys have a little bit of lead time on delivery on getting some of the containers and stuff like that out of there. But, you know, we'll, with this stuff, including the carports, we plan to be out of there early spring.
Okay, so at that point, there's no reason that emergency gate shouldn't be installed and operational, correct?
Correct. And, you know, while we're there, we can install it, we can have a key to it if, you know, I think they required, there was a snow plowing key and then a key for the fire marshal, so it's going to be a double keyed gate, so two, and we can have access and we can use that, you know, when we're on-site, because it'll just be intermittent as we finish these items, so...
I understand it being, you know, temporary and not in there for construction. Obviously, we hassle going in and out with construction, but once construction is done, I would expect it's up and operational, you know, so I think that's what you were kind of asking earlier, John, was when that could go in, so...
It's currently barricaded off with sawhorses so that nobody can use it, but, you know, the gate, yeah, we want to get that in, and, for sure.
Anything else, Joe?
No, sorry. Go through those if you want.
Yeah, I was thinking we'd need two motions, maybe we can talk about the second motion?
Yep.
It looks like if everybody's okay with what we're looking at here, we need two motions. The first would be to approve the findings of fact that's set forth in the report, and if that were to be moved and approved, then before we do the second motion, maybe we can have John clarify some of the verbiage changes that we're talking about this evening for the conditions that would be in that second motion. Anybody want to make a motion about the findings of fact?
I'll make the motion, the finding of fact for application SPR 2000-09-M included in PD Report 2023-20, and forming part of this motion to be approved.
Support. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And then it looks like staff is suggesting we need to make another motion if we're going to approve this, but we've talked about several tweaks. Do you want to maybe call out to everybody, John, what the specific tweaks are that we just made to the, to the motion as drafted in the report?
So, condition number one will be restated as such. Scales shall be provided on the following site plan sheets, C-1 dated May 8th, 2022, C-1C and C-1 dated January 30th, 2023, and submitted to the township... C-1C, and C-1 dated January 30, 2023, and submitted to the township by the end of February 2023. Condition number two will be adjusted, basically say, adjustment to the parking stripe, parking space striping shall be completed so that it matches with the location of the carport columns by the end of May 2023. Three and four can remain the same. Five will basically state the six trees to be planted along the existing turnout area on Hartman Road, and the 12 trees to be planted along the west side of building number one shall be specified as evergreens in accordance with the zoning ordinance and shall be installed by the end of June 2023. The number six will remain the same. Seven will be added. That is, the emergency gate shall be installed by the end of March 2023. And then an additional one, number eight, parking lot islands shall be provided per zoning ordinance requirements. That's it.
John, on, on item six, at our last, last time they were here, and I didn't bring my paperwork, I apologize, they mentioned not only trees, but there would be a berm or a ditch dug.
Yeah, I think it's shown on the plan.
Is it, is the fact that it's shown on the ma, on the plan adequate?
Yeah, and they, they will coordinate with the road commission, because the specifications for that will have to be coordinated, because it obviously is providing drainage for Hartman Road. So there is a statement in there that it will be coordinated and meet the requirements of the road commission.
Okay, yeah, because the trees would be great, but if it's not somehow barricaded, they're still pulling behind the trees in part, probably, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely, I totally agree with that, it needs to be ditched.
Right, okay. I just didn't see it on the condition, but as long as it's on the plan, I'm good, so...
Molly?
On item one, I think when you were reading it, what I heard was by the end of January, but it's by the end of February.
Could've said that, yeah.
We're not there.
Thank you.
So does anybody care to make a motion that could basically be the motion suggested by staff as modified verbally this evening? Is anybody prepared to make such a motion?
I'll make that motion. Application SPR 20, or 2000-09-M, submitted by J.D. Donaldson to amend the site plan for the Chelsea Park West apartments portion of the Chelsea Park. PUD be approved with the following conditions, as stated by John.
Everybody understand that motion? Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck out there. The next item of business is new business, Planning Department Report 2023-19, topics for the February 28 joint meeting that we're gonna have with the town board. See, John, you've got a one-page report for us here.
Yeah, I'm gonna cover some items, and then Steve's also gonna mention some things as well. So, when we were looking at scheduling this, the, we became aware that the road commission is going to be doing a presentation and having a conversation with the township board on February 28th. So we thought that would also be a good opportunity, since we're going through the master plan process, for the planning commission to also hear about the discussions. And I think it's in an effort, intent of that discussion is to have better communication between the township and road commission. And I think it's helpful for the planning commission to hear that conversation or be a part of that, because we're doing a lot of development reviews and so forth. We're working on cross-access arrangements, connections in the developments. And so there's certainly a relationship between the land use development and what's happening on our roadways throughout the township. So that's, that will be the initial part of that meeting on February 28th. There will be some time after that to have some conversation between the township board and the planning commission. And we've kind of, because we know that certainly there'll be time for that road commission discussion, we didn't want to use up a lot of time to have planning commission stuff discussed. We did have that joint meeting last year where we kind of kicked off the master plan. So this would be an opportune time to really talk about the master plan, where we're kind of taking the next step. So we've been gathering information, existing conditions, we've been gathering maps, information. We've been having some conversations with people, we've been doing some interviews with different stakeholders. The township board had the community survey issued last year, so that's been really helpful. So now we're kind of getting into more of the actual writing up of the, the master plan. So, based on our conversation at your study session last month, I did go back and change this timeline a little bit. It basically narrowed it down a little bit. And probably the timeline is, is, is just an illustration, but actually, if I could point out, is the backside of this has a, this might be more of interest to you. But it's a planning commission study session, so we're gonna, the intent is to use the study sessions as really your time to really work on the plan. And we think it's reasonable to be able to kind of move through this. We have the joint meeting here coming up on February 28th with the township board. But your, your, your next study session after that in March...
Won't be that late, will it? Maybe a week earlier?
Yeah, I was just wondering, that date doesn't seem correct.
Will be March 22nd, probably?
Yeah. I don't know. We'll, we'll check on that. Anyways, your March study session will be wrapping up some of the housing discussions that we've been having, and some recommendations that we have. And that's not necessarily drafting the section of the ord, or the master plan, but really just kind of talking about some housing ideas. By that time, we'll have wrapped up our meetings with the neighboring communities, and we'll have some highlights from that discussion. And then talk, you know, kind of honing in on the vision and the core concepts, which is at the very beginning of the, the plan. And one of the things that I think when talking with the township board is a lot of these subjects that we're gonna be covering in the master plan are really building off of the township board's strategic plan. So there are subjects in there that talk about water quality, transportation, infrastructure, housing, public safety, and so forth. And that's why we see some of those listed in here, is really that, that, the strategic plan, which actually, you probably should provide a copy of that in the packet for the meeting on the 28th. It's very simple, it's just a one-page, kind of itemized, a list of, of goal statements that the township board has in terms of where its direction, it wants to see the township go. This master plan is really kind of building on that and getting into maybe some of the more details from a master plan standpoint, how it can work towards getting accomplishments in achieving some of those goals. So, but anyways, going through that, when we get into like the April study session, when we talk about environment, water quality, and energy, that's like one chapter within the master plan. Parks and trails is another. Moving on to the next month, transportation infrastructure. In anticipation of those study sessions, we'll draft some, some pretty basic language in terms of what the goals and objectives that we recommend on, on some of those. And it'll be an opportunity to have a discussion at those study sessions about that type of language and text that we would be putting into the plan. And then, based on your feedback, we'll refine those. So each of those meetings will have a, kind of a theme, based on those different subject areas that will essentially, if you call it the meeting last month, kind of had an outline. We're basically now of the master plan, we're kind of filling in those segments and doing it meeting by meeting. I did add a little bit more in there for the future land use, future connections discussion, because that's when we're gonna be looking at the, the master plan, future land use map, and, you know, might take a little bit more involved in terms of making some changes to that. But the goal would be to pretty much have a draft plan by January of next year. So I think it's, it's doable. One of the things that we're, when we're talking about this, we're, we're not talking about ultimately a very thick plan. A lot of the information, the background stuff, we have a good sense of what's happening in the township right now. That's already been gathered, that will be basically like a appendix to the, the plan. This is really gonna be kind of the meat and potatoes of it, this will be giving direction. And this will be something that I could see, you know, being pretty concise. It doesn't have to have a lot of, you know, very, you know, details on it. It's really kind of focusing on goals and objectives to achieve those goals. So this is something that we'll kind of work through on a discussion basis, kind of honing them as we go.
The town board strategic plan that you were referring to, is that the one that was adopted, I think in 2019, 2020, and it's on the, it's on the website for the township? If anybody wants to see it, it's, it's there.
Right. So this kind of gives you, it's kind of, there's this kind of illustrative look at how this timeline is. This kind of just says, from, why, we're gonna be doing a lot of other stuff behind the scenes, preparing the information for you. This really kind of is almost like your agenda essentially for the whole year, using the study sessions.
That's helpful.
Joe was right, the, the March one is the 22nd, but you'd be, you'd use Tuesday dates all the way down through.
Oh, is that what I did?
Yeah, all the 23s are wrong, if you match up to your actual schedule. Molly might recognize those dates, they're all town board meetings, but...
I think that threw me off, is that February 28th?
Joint meeting of that date.
Okay, thanks for the heads up on that. Fortunately, that's not an official document there, but...
Steve probably did it, and he was on painkillers over his shoulders.
It's really hard to do it one-handed and figure out all this scheduling? Yeah. Also, just on the other side, the timeline, all the things we were working on last year at the study session, as John was saying, we're gonna have like a big appendix of kind of our existing conditions. All of those will be sections of that, we'll refine it into a full existing conditions. But all the things we did, we did a build-out analysis, we did a land use, existing land use analysis. We can mention things like MSU students project, but will be some background information leading into the non-motorized plan, which will be part of the master plan. All of these things will build on each other, so the joint meeting will also be a good chance to indicate where we've come so far on this.
So we thought this would be an item to kind of share, you know, kind of, so that the township board understands what your work is gonna be for in 2023. It's fairly aggressive, but I think it's doable. And the goal is to then come back and have a joint meeting in February of 2024, where we can have a draft plan. Planning commission would see that the month before, but then it'd kind of be presented at that joint meeting, and it'd be an opportunity to kind of discuss between the two, the township board and the planning commission. Does, does this, you know, master plan make sense for Garfield Township? And then from there, we'll go through the, the Planning Enabling Act has all the requirements for public hearing and reviews by the adjoining communities and that type of thing.
If other people have other issues they want to talk about at the joint meeting, are you hoping to hear about that now, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody got other topics that they think right now you'd want to be talking about with the plant, the town board in a couple of weeks when we have our joint meeting?
I think we talked about Hartman Hammond, maybe, maybe some sort of, just make sure everybody's consensus on that, but that may come up in the, the road commission report.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
But make sure we talk about it.
Things like water and sewer infrastructure, is that stuff that's already proposed to get talked about?
It could be made a specific thing, especially as part of master plan, as we're looking at like waters, future water sewer service area, and find, township board would know about financing it. In terms of man, master plan, it's, yeah, do we have a plan of where's kind of the next places it would go? That could be a topic as well.
Is the road commission doing their presentation, and you're gonna have that discussion, and then they're gonna leave and you have the discussion with the town board?
Yes, yeah, kind of like two, two separate.
Two separate things.
Yeah.
But before they leave, all of us would have a chance to ask them questions, and if we wanted to, it sounds like?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you'll be party to that conversation when they're, when they're presenting, so if you got questions, I, I know we have some, some things that we've kind of been looking at, you know, some, you know, questions. We're aware that they're gonna be, you know, doing some road improvements here. I've heard some improvements to South Airport at the very east end of the township, down by Costco. I don't know if that also includes any improvements on our side, I don't think it does. I think it's more between Town Line and Three Mile, they're supposed to make some improvements. So I was kind of, you know, is that gonna impact us at, at any, in any way? So some of those types of questions we have. I know one we've talked about a little bit with them previously, but is that as the Cherryland Center is being redeveloped, there's the light that's out there on Garfield Avenue that's blinking lights, been like that way for a while, what's kind of, how will that, if, how will that ever go back to cycling through as a, as a formal light? What is kind of the trigger mechanism? Is it, are they just gonna monitor, or is it, you know, level of redevelopment and activity at the Cherryland Center, or whatever, it's just so we're kind of on the same page? So we got some of those questions, whether that's appropriate at that point, you know, we could, you know, always follow up with them else, you know, sometime after the meeting, but...
I'd like to see housing as an issue we discussed with the trustees.
Just kind of the thoughts on that?
Yeah, very broad in general.
Well, more specifically, are they willing to look at small houses, granny flat type arrangements? Those, those kinds of changes? That's a pretty big change for Garfield.
We could prompt, have some prompts, we can go back to some of our own housing discussions here, and maybe list some of those as kind of prompts to illustrate, you know, what, what are your thoughts on these? And I think, in going through this process, I don't think we have to operate on parallel tracks where we don't see them or hear from them for 12 months and come back, here's the plan. There, I think there's opportunity, if there are questions or so forth, or we want to get some feedback from the township board, I think we can do that through the year, whether it's, you know, reporting at a, at a meeting, or, or some other way to kind of just get some feedback. I think there's, there's always that opportunity. If you got questions or thoughts.
One thing we had talked about as well is doing the pop-up events. We talked about that, I think, last time here. If that's something that would interest both the planning commission and the board, both for staff to kind of organize and put on, but also not just have planning commissioners to come attend some of those, but township board trustees as well. Since they're ultimately the ones that will adopt a plan, to see kind of part of the process of how it's made, and the community input that goes into shaping the direction of that. And certainly invite them to do something like that as well. But also just to see what other like community engagement strategies should we be employing as we're forming the plan.
I, I fished out, I don't have a lot of old minutes, but I have the minutes from the meeting we had with the town board a year ago. And it laid out a lot of the topics that were discussed and certain things that might be priorities. It might be interesting, as you guys are working on an agenda, to maybe take a look at that.
Sure.
And maybe as part of a report, kind of give us some insight into what happened in the last 12 months on the things that we talked about with the town board 12 months ago.
Yeah, we can hear that, that's a good idea.
Looks like it was done in March, if you can fish out.
Yep.
The other stuff, anybody knows they want to, the idea of talking about with the town board in a couple of weeks?
We do have another item on here that we thought might be good. And I'll let Steve kind of cover this, if you look at the handout on your desk, that's the blue header... If you look at the handout on your desk, that's the blue header. Yeah. We're trying to think of ways that we might be thinking about process in terms of streamlining the review process. And there's, there's some ideas behind this that we're kind of investigating and we thought at this point, we, just having a conversation with the planning commission here and potentially could be a conversation with, at the joint meeting as well, just to kind of get feedback on some thoughts and ideas that we have. I think it's, you know, the township has used processes that have been pretty standard for quite some time. And the reality is, our guidance for most of these has, is the Zoning Enabling Act that the state of Michigan, it says if you're going to do zoning in your community, you got to follow these requirements. It's actually pretty short when it comes to things on processes. So a lot of things that we do are out of practice, but not necessarily by law. I think some of them are very good in what we do, but maybe there are some tweaks that might make it a smoother process for all of those involved. So Steve, if you kind of want to go through.
Yeah, I can walk through it. And some of it comes, came from like both re, taking a look, taking another look at Zoning Enabling Act, when we've done some of these webinars, some of the kind of strategies a lot of communities are using is streamline processes as much as possible. So even just taking a look to review them from time to time seems to be prudent, but also just like in our experience of like preparing things to go through processes, we kind of took a look at what are we doing currently? What are some of the challenges with that? And we put propose just to put an idea out there. This would be like, just to kind of take the temperature a little bit on these ideas. But, so like currently, if someone were to submit an application, I use the example of special use permit. So if they were to submit for a special use permit, you submit at least five weeks before the planning mission meeting to be considered for that agenda. So the deadline for this, the March meeting was this past Thursday, because it takes us time to review for completeness, give it back to the applicant, for them to get it back to us. And then one of the challenges with that is that, that can be interpreted as, like if we're talking to a prospective applicant, they're like, when, when's your deadline for me to get on the agenda? It's like, all right, this is the deadline for you to submit it to us, but we also have to look at it to make sure it's actually complete before we put it on the agenda. But they hear deadline and agenda, and sometimes that's like as much as is retained. So it's sort of like an expectation that they're going to be on an agenda. And so like, a potential way to look at that is to allow an application to be submitted whenever, but to retain or to emphasize that it must be complete and have a deadline for it to be complete with enough time to have it be put in the packet. And then when we do the completeness review, the other kind of big part of this is, in our ordinance, it's conducted within 10 days of receiving the application. So all the ones we received last Thursday, I think it's 10 working days. So essentially two, two weeks of business days. So everything we received last Thursday, we're going to review and send these out to the applicants. And if there's any deficiencies in the application, note them, have them resubmit. The way it's worded in that section of the ordinance is that it's really solely to determine if the information submitted is sufficient to allow for further review. It's not a determination or decision on the application itself. So for example, if someone submitted an application and there is no landscaping plan, like that's an easy one to say, no, you need to have a landscaping plan. The way the zoning ordinance, completeness review standards, like we will, in doing that, make comments on, like maybe some preliminary comments on it needs to meet this part of the ordinance, and if we see anything, to make note of that, but it doesn't really make that, that's not an approval, and it's also not something that would really deter from still being introduced to the planning commission. And landscaping happens to be, that actually is one where you do have some discretion, but for a lot of standards such as lighting or parking or setbacks, planning commission doesn't actually have discretion on these things. But the completeness review just basically says, do you have it enough to send it to planning commission? Not are all of these things actually correct at this point? So one, we could potentially look at this down the line and maybe actually even amending that section, but if that's something that planning commission would be interested to allow staff to kind of review that. And I know kind of in other communities, more in the past, was site plan and special use reviews were often actually separated, even on the same thing. You might make, like, you do the motions on the findings of fact and then the application. In some places, they would actually do separate motions on the site plan and a special use. And in this case, a lot of the site plan standards are not actually a planning commission discretion. Like what you're looking at mostly is the special use standards, and when we do findings of fact, it's those standards, like a special use shall meet such and such. So it's just sort of highlighting that challenge that some of these things come up when we see them at the introduction, and then if they aren't taken care of, they're often made conditions. So the sort of challenge on the backend that I didn't actually put in this chart, the challenge on the backend is if there's a lot of conditions, a lot of things sit in our department where they've been approved with conditions and we're waiting on the applicant to then actually meet those conditions. Sometimes that works out really well, and if the applicant is on top of things, or if there's an amendment to something that's been approved, we're just kind of dealing with a few small things. Sometimes it can be more than that, though. So sort of the idea was if there's a way, and if we need to look and see if it's something we might want to change the zoning ordinance language down the line and actually propose an amendment to do that. If there's a way to kind of get some of those nondiscretionary things taken care of ahead of time, it gets it more complete than when you see it, you see a site plan that is actually going to meet the standards, and then you're looking at it for the rest of the standards that you have the discretion on. And it makes it easier on the backend when we're looking at kind of finalizing the approval and administering any conditions that are left over. And the other part of this is our standard, and it is, has been our practice, to do an introduction, and then the planning commission makes the motion to set the public hearing, which is a good practice, because you get to see it and then sort of accept the application and then set the public hearing. Although we did also look that, as John was saying, the zoning enabling act doesn't actually say a lot on practice and our process, and we don't think it's required that planning commission has to set the public hearing. A potential alternative way to do this, especially if we are able to kind of prescreen the application more ahead of time and get some of the nondiscretionary things. If we, in our staff report, can be mentioned in things that we're reviewing, we could potentially say something, oh, we've received this application, they're working on such and such things. And if so desired, you could direct us to, once something is complete, or maybe in the ordinance, direct us to say, once something is complete, have us set the public hearing. And then when you see it, it is more complete, and then you see it at the public hearing and still have the findings of fact. So you still have it in two meetings. Potential advantage would be then it only takes up two agendas and not three. But mostly we want to hear, like, is this something planning commission be interested in? I think there's, there's never going to be a perfect way to do it, but we just wanted to highlight some challenges with the way it's currently done. And just to say, we do have the option, if we wanted to pursue changing our ordinance, the Zoning Enabling Act seems to allow that discretion. It's a pretty wide discretion on what we could do, so just wanted to get commissioners' thoughts on that.
We kind of discussed this already at different times about trying to streamline the process. In fact, we've made some exceptions about scheduling, reviewing its study sessions to, because of the way the months fell, and maybe it would extend a whole nother month for somebody. So I think anything we can do to streamline the process, as long as the process is still being done with its diligence and completed properly, I don't have any problem with streamlining it, because, I mean, you save somebody a month when it starts to start a project or construction, I think it's a good thing. So I'm all for looking at a streamlined process myself. I don't know how many else feel about it.
So when an applicant comes in, they have a list of, we need this, 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 we need this.
Correct.
And if it's not complete, we don't review it.
Well, we, we do a completeness review if it's, and we send them a letter and basically says, you're missing this, 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 and this. And then they're, they're required, we give them a deadline, okay, now you got to submit it back. And then if it's generally met all those items, we can start the review and we can get something to you. It's rare that we would not put somebody on the agenda. Has happened, but that's what, like Steve said, they think, they hit that deadline. They're not thinking about us doing a completeness review and seeing that they got the information. They're looking for your approval. So they're already kind of jumping, or starting that process. In our case, because for instance, SUP takes basically three months, they're looking at, okay, I want to start that clock going and going through the process. This kind of really puts more pressure on us to ensure that you're not even going to see it until not only is it complete, but actually is compliant, so that it, they can submit a landscaping plan and essentially it's meet the completeness review, but the plan itself may not be compliant to the requirements of the ordinance. So it forces us to really work with them to making sure that the application, the site plan, everything is, is complete and compliant, with the exception of those things that are discretionary, standards and so forth, that are under the purview of the planning commission. So a lot of the, ideally, a lot of the detailed stuff, the small stuff is, should be addressed sooner. It's a, puts it, puts it more on our shoulders at the beginning, as opposed to kind of stretching it out through the time period.
This is not going to change the definition of complete?
Yeah, so that's the thing, that when we look at that ordinance, it's, it would have to be adjusted slightly if that's, because completeness doesn't mean compliance, or, not that I want to use the word compliance, but, you know, conforms to the requirements of the ordinance.
Don't think you'll have any, excuse me, you'll have any problem explaining that to the people that the rules have changed and this is what it really means?
Yeah, well, I think one of the things we would do is we would eliminate the deadlines. So if you do have somebody that comes in and, boy, they, they got everything together, they got the plan, it's got everything, we can get that. I mean, it's an incentive to, for them to, if they get it together earlier on, we can get them out quicker. And the one question that was always kind of out there is who has the ability to set the public hearing? Now, the law doesn't say that it has to be the review body, like in this case, the planning commission, or even at the township board level, does the, the township board doesn't necessarily have to set the public hearing under the Zoning Enabling Act. So, because I know from this, my own experience, in some communities, they do a special use permit all in one meeting. I like the public hearing and then the findings of fact separate, because I think it gives, to me, that public hearing meeting is discussion, things are, you know, the, the public may raise things, you guys raised things that need to be addressed, and it does give some time to maybe get that resolved.
I'll tell you what doesn't happen here and happens on jobs that I myself have worked on before planning commission bodies, because we have a separate meeting, when you have the meeting at the same time and accelerate the process, oftentimes there'll be a planning commission member who will bring up an issue. And you can sit out there as an applicant or an audience member and observe often that issues get raised and then they don't get worked into the motion. And so your landscape plan was deficient, the planning commission talked about it, but they didn't actually include it in the motion that they decided they wanted to approve on the same night. And so it was deficient, but it got approved, so I guess we're good. And I think that this body and our staff do an excellent job of taking our time and making sure that we get all of the comments included and there's a thoughtful process in what gets approved by this community. So I, yeah, I, it's great that we do that. In my experience, I totally know what you guys are saying. I've been known to whine when, you know, it's, it's your classic, working the ref. Oh, can't I get in front of the planning commission sooner? I'll get that taken care of for you. I'm sure you must hear it all the time, right? I was, I was looking actually on my phone at the checklist, because I haven't, because I've been on the planning commission, it's been decades since I've submitted a plan or, or looked at the checklist for Garfield Township. I think a lot of what you guys are talking about are some really good ideas. I think you could probably look at expanding the checklist. And, and I, you know, I heard you say something, John, about writing a letter. What about just first round is, you don't get a letter until I can check all the boxes on the checklist? So the applicant submits and you just return on the checklist with a check mark next to non-compliant. And then when they have all of that, you, you, I'm sorry, incomplete. And then when they have everything, you can start talking about compliance. And I do like the idea, it's a nice incentive for an applicant to have their blank together. If they know that if I'm compliant with staff, I get to skip a introductory meeting. If I'm not compliant with the ordinance, then that means I'm going to the planning commission and asking for a waiver on something, that should be decided before it goes to a public hearing.
Right.
But if you're compliant, you get to go right to a public hearing. And that, I mean, I think that helps grease the skids for your review process, and it's an incentive to the applicant. But I would encourage you, and again, I haven't gone through all of our forms sitting here on my phone, but I think a, it'd be really difficult to dig down into all the compliance issues that you could run into, because there, there's a multitude of them. But common non-compliance issues that you could easily bring to their attention, you know, we deal with some of the same non-compliance issues all the time. One that comes to mind is a vegetated buffer that doesn't meet the landscape requirements, you know? If you've got it just spelled out, vegetated buffer, and there's a checkbox, you're non-compliant, they have the option to make it compliant or make their process longer. And I'll tell you, one of the, a couple of extra trees and saving a month or two on a review process, that's a huge incentive. And I can go to a client and say, you give them these trees and we can shave off a month for your review process, they're on board. They're not going to mess around with that. But I think, I think a lot of what you're suggesting is really good. I would encourage simplifications of the paper process via checklists and less letter writing, I think would be helpful for you and for the applicant.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, I think there's, you have, some firms will come to us and they, you know, they, they know what they're doing. It's, and they get it, they get it right pretty much. Sometimes it's just knowing our ordinance, they might not know it completely, so they haven't seen it because they haven't experienced it. So we just have to, you know, make some adjustments usually. And then we get some that are just lazy and really are relying on us to do all of that work to say, you don't have this, you got to put this sign here, this is what you got to do. Avoid, then they don't have to read the ordinance, because we've just wrote, read it for them, because we know the ordinance, we're essentially doing their work on that. The, the one other part that does come a little bit of a challenge, and I don't know if any process can really be addressing it, but some of the times the applicants aren't, ideally, they'll have like an engineering firm or somebody representing them. Sometimes we get these owners and they're kind of over their heads on some of these things. And that's the one, we try to work with them the best we can. We're not trying to, you know, say, you got to have everything here, you know, depending on what the application is. We try to work with them. They're still required to meet all the requirements, but we're a little bit more easygoing with them, because we understand where they're at. But that's where it's always helpful, that they do have a representative that actually knows how to do a full-blown site plan set and so forth, so.
Seems to me, just by virtue of the fact you guys are bringing this to our attention, that we need to do a little something to work on it. that we need to do a little something to work on it. I think I would agree with your comments, Joe. Anything we can do to expedite things is going to make most of the applicants happy campers. But we also want to avoid doing anything hasty or failing to do something because we were in a hurry. And we don't want to stick a gun to staff if somebody drops something on their desk at five to five on Thursday and they got to get a completeness review, that's not fair. And I think we got to back up our staff on things like that. So if you, in my view, if there's some ideas of what ought to get tweaked and how to tweak it, I think you're probably going to be met pretty, pretty well, pretty good reception by the Planning Commission and I suspect the Town Board, too.
Good, that's good feedback.
Any other comments anybody wants to make about it?
You want us to kind of maybe work on this? I mean, we talked about maybe bringing this up with the, at the joint meeting, or do you think maybe this is?
I don't think you need to do it then. We've probably got other issues that are hotter burner items.
Sounds good. Well, I think based on some of the feedback, I, I like the incentive where like if you got your stuff together, you can go sooner. If not, then you got to, got to go the norm, the old school process. And, and that was, you know, part of this came out of when we were thinking that when you do a special use permit, because we kind of have this practice of the review body setting that public hearing, we have that introduction meeting, really doesn't, any, nothing really happens. Although we do recognize that for you, and I know this from my own experience being on a Planning Commission, you get warmed up to the project. So you see it and you kind of get acclimated. Because sometimes when you open up a site plan, it first takes you a long time to understand it. So, but, so how we would do that, instead of having an introductory meeting, is through their, through our PD monthly report, we'll be able to keep, track these projects more often, as well as when you see on your agenda that says items for next agenda or potentially on the next agenda, you'll have some sense of what to expect, so it's not coming in cold. Because I, I know some, it's like for us, sometimes we study these site plans and we look, we have to kind of set them aside, study them again, because there are some things that we might miss, so. But this is really good feedback for us.
Anything else we want to talk about on this agenda item, folks? If not, the next item is public comment, and we have outlasted 100% of our public, so I guess there won't be a public comment now. Other business, we need to do a formal rescheduling of our February 22.
Yep.
Meeting to make a joint with the Town Board on the 28th?
Correct.
Does that require a motion to do that?
Yes.
And if I recall correctly, our February 28th meeting would be at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM?
Correct.
Yes.
Motion to amend the 2023 Planning Commission meeting dates as presented?
Support.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I guess we've already talked about items for the next agenda. It's going to be a joint meeting with the Town Board. One quick question, I noticed in some earlier minutes that there was maybe going to be an update on that one childcare operation that tabled itself because they ran into issues. Have they come back? Do we have any more information on that?
Not yet.
Okay. Anybody got anything else for the good of the order this evening?
Take a motion, we adjourn.
We're adjourned.